The Christiansburg Town Council Meeting of July 22, 2025 to order. I need a motion and a second to allow Mrs. Bowman to join by phone.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, discussion, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Set as five oh and one absent. Ms. Bowman, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. As we normally do, we'll take a moment of reflection and what I'd like to do, we lost, last week, we lost one of our retired police officers, Sergeant Frank Graves, who was also a life member of the Rescue Squad and a former captain of the Rescue Squad. So if we take a moment and remember Frank and your thoughts and his family and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. If you'd all stand, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Hicks, Councilwoman Hicks, if she would lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Under adjustments to the agenda, Randy, I believe you have a couple of things.
Correct. The closed meeting item, the address should actually be 1460 South Franklin Street. And this isn't really an agenda item, but just a clarification, on the bill list, on page 11, express services mentions the cemetery. Cemetery shouldn't be there, it's streets.
Is that in this one or the last one?
It's in this current bill list. It was in last bill list as well, but it's current one also.
Very good. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the July 8, 2025 meeting. The bill list, a purchase order to Henderson Products for the purchase of a dump body, V-Box, salt spreader, pre-wet, snowplow, phew, in the amount of $152,726. We have a purchase order to Excel Truck Group for the purchase of a 2,026 Freightliner, 114 SD tandem axle chassis, in the amount of $146,613. We have a resolution recognizing August 3 through the 9th as National Farmers Market Week. And we have a revision from July 8, 2025, public hearing was originally scheduled for August 12, 2025. Set council public hearing for September 9, 2025, for a public, for a code amendment request by the town of Christiansburg applicant to amend the Christiansburg Town Code, Chapter 42, Conditional Use Permit, Section 42-8, lighting and minimum off-street parking, Section 49-9, corner lots, Sections 42-74-3, 42-99-3, 42-134-3, 42-161-3, 42-189-3, 42-224-3, 42-255-3. Permitted uses, Section 42-33, 42-68, 42-93, 42-128, 42-155, 42-183, 42-218, 42-249, 42-281, 42-305, 42-226, the Christiansburg Town Code. The request is to alphabetize permitted uses and parking requirements to clarify, to clarify corner lot frontage requirements and to clarify what reasonable conditions must be imposed on the conditional use permit.
Make a motion to approve. The consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussions?
You have a question. So I am glad that, Randy, you brought that up about the cemetery stuff or whatever. But talking about the bill lists, even with the thing for clarification from the minutes from the last meeting that I was not here, actually, should I, I was not here, but I was in the meeting, so should I, I should be okay, right?
Yeah.
But then, why was that money under, even like, from cemetery or from the streets? Actually, it was from the streets maintenance instead of being facility maintenance, the patio that was built over here?
Street, was charged to streets, it'd be streets non-eligible, correct, Jim? It wouldn't be an eligible reimbursement expense from, from VDOT because it's not actual street work. But our street department did the work, so we would've charged it to streets non-eligible?
I think that's what we're reviewing.
But then, the thing from today was not cemetery, but it was also a street maintenance thing?
It, it was under streets non-eligible, it's where, streets operations.
Let me explain this. So what is, what's happening is, the invoice for Express Services, Inc., is split. When Mr. Lantinius receives it, it's split, and part of it is posted to cemetery and part of it is posted to the street operations for the landscaping. Well, what happens is when we enter it into Munis, our new system, whatever the description is that you enter first is the one that it puts for everything. That's why the cemetery alphabetically is first. So it is putting it on the streets as the description, but that is for the street operations. It's not for the cemetery, and it's some of their part-time help that they hire.
Sees on position.
Okay, got it.
That help explain how that?
A little bit. The reason why I make such a fuss is because we're voting on their bill lists and things like that, and I want to make sure that they kind of feed in what we're voting for, that's all.
Yeah, if you would just mark through this, the, on page 11 where it says cemetery in the description, the rest of that is accurate, it's just not the cemetery for that piece of it. It is the streets.
So is there a possibility to ever change that somehow, or is that the way it is gonna be, like?
We're gonna just remove, I asked the person who keys in that description to just not put in cemetery anymore. It will just say landscaping labor with the invoice date, and then it, you'll see the split, part goes to cemetery and part goes to the street operations.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you so much for the explanation.
Anybody else?
I do have a couple of questions for our grand bill list. On page one, middle way down, there's two charges that appear that they could possibly be a duplicate. It's for Rubble Kellper and Call LLP, Community Development Block Grant expenditures of $998.32. The descriptions are identical as far as I can see, I just want to check that, see if that was, is either duplicate or if it's two charges for the same thing in the same amount.
Okay.
And then, I see we've processed the meeting now, is that for the conference room? The IT information technology from Amazon?
So? Okay, so let me address the first one. The first one, the Remmel Kepler and, I don't know how to say that, I'm sorry, but the community development block grant amount, that is not a duplicate invoice. That is, I can't remember how that invoice is billed, I think it's billed on an hourly rate, and they probably billed two times in a row for the same number of hours.
Okay, thank you so much. And the last thing is on page nine, and it's Court Member Services again for Disney Resorts, for $874.14, again for public relations. Is this the same conference? It should be, and, from the bills coming in, or is that an additional conference, or?
That's gonna be the same conference. The way that the cutoff is for the credit card, it wouldn't have come in until later, when it, once it was charged at a later date. And I can't remember the date of the actual charge, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
So is that two bills or one?
It's hard to tell for us because there's no date on anything, so I don't know until I have, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you very much.
Okay.
Is that the, two different bills for the Disney stuff, or is that the same one as that we voted the other day?
No.
There's just a.
A third one, actually.
It's all the same trip, all the same conference, it just, the way the bills fell through the cycle is how they fell differently on the bill list.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. We have no introductions and presentations tonight. So we'll move into citizens' comments. Is anyone here that would like to address council?
Christine Waltz, 1370 Rigby Street. I want to preface this with saying that I understand people make mistakes. I'd always learned, though, one of the reasons that you do it collectively is to try and limit those mistakes, especially when you're dealing with other people. I want to read to you what was in the news, in the news messenger. The Christiansburg Farmers Market is located on the Recreation Center parking lot, 1600 North Franklin Street. You all changed that, if I'm not mistaken. You're still advertising it over at the Rec Center. You probably should fix it. Thank you.
Ms. Well?
I just wanted to say, we actually don't run that ad in the paper. That is the news messenger who's doing that on their own, and they haven't reached out to us or gotten that information. So yeah, we will reach out and correct it, but that's not something that the town has done.
Thank you.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Rigby Street. I didn't say anything at the, a couple of things that y'all are looking at tonight. I didn't say anything during the public hearing because I really wasn't that familiar with it, but under item A, I mean, you're considering a conditional use permit for something that the actual owner has no intention of building anything on, he's trying to sell the land. It doesn't seem to me that that's setting a very good precedent to start doing things prior to the land, you know, for somebody that doesn't even want to do anything. And CUPs are, I mean, only good for like, two years before you, you have to either start the construction, or they're no good. It just seems you're putting the cart ahead of the horse in this situation. And once you approve it, you know, at that point, can anything be done after that? You know, can they decide, you know, and you end up not liking the design. It's my understanding there isn't even a site plan for it. So, you know, I think that would be a bad decision to approve. And then item D, the recording of the water authority meetings, I definitely would be in favor of that. I'm all for, you know, open government, and the best way to do it is to have them recorded and have them posted. That way, people have the ability to know what's going on. And those meetings happen once a month or something like, they happen at a weird time. Everybody's at work. I mean, having a meeting at noon is not the best time for people who actually have jobs to be able to be interested. So if y'all are gonna make a recommendation that they be recorded, I think that would be the appropriate action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close citizens' comments, any committee reports, any meetings over the last, well, you had a street committee tonight.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
All right, just a little bit of what we talked about during our street committee meeting, if I lose track, I got help here, vice versa. One of the things we talked about, as you know, the police department are doing, I'm called, speed enforcement, traffic enforcement. And I think they're doing it like in two-week cycles, is that correct? And so far, they have done five locations. And out of that five locations, they did, the first day, they wrote two speeding tickets. So hopefully, we'll keep this up and get feedback from the citizens to where they will, of course, everyone now says, I like to sit on my street, my street. As we know, the PD can't be on every street, so hopefully, through the rotation, we'll get feedback from the citizens and as a committee, see what they can do. But so far, it sounds like that, I don't know what, do we, did we give it a name? I don't think we did.
Not really. We call it enhanced speed enforcement for residential zones, but it doesn't have a formal title.
So, Chris, if I, if I understand correctly, this is being funded by the state, we're not, through a state grant, it's not?
Correct.
Direct cost to the police department and the town?
Correct. We get Department of Motor Vehicles grants for speed, occupant safety, and DUI enforcement annually. So we're just using some of the money that we would normally use for enforcement in general, you know, those kind of extra patrols, we're directing those into neighborhoods and having officers do that. Now, that's not to say that regular patrol function won't be used in neighborhoods as well, when they're available, but the benefit of using grant overtime to do it is that we can dedicate an officer and say, you know, go sit on Allegheny Street for two hours. I can't really take a patrolman and put him out there and do that because if they get a call, they have to leave to go answer it. So we can't have as much dedicated enforcement without the grant funding, if that makes sense. They can still, patrol can still do it, they just might get called away if a call for service comes in, where these are special shifts that can be dedicated specifically to that.
Thank you.
All right. And another thing we're looking at is some streets, as you know, in town are very narrow, so we're looking at ways to improve, make parking on one side or something like that, but we're gonna try to get feedback from the private department chief, I forgot his title, but anyway, from him, and also from our.
Public Works.
The what?
Public Works.
Public Works, I was going, Public Works, because they have some trucks that can't make it down some of these streets with cars on both sides. So we're trying to come up with some type of solution where maybe be parking on one side. We know that's not gonna please everyone, but once again, if you're in the apartment and you call for rescue and they can't get to you because the street's blocked, you know, you're gonna be very upset. So that's, so that's what we're looking at.
Can I?
Covered it.
All right.
Go ahead.
Oh.
I was just gonna make a comment. I'm glad the, that the extra patrol is being done in some of these streets, especially like the one in Allegheny, because I know, that was brought out to town council because of the citizens requesting this, is that correct?
Yes, we've gotten complaints, definitely many complaints through the years.
But at the same time, I would really like to see if the committee, the street committee can actually look into bringing back again to town council, the, the request for closures of the streets, if possible, just like everybody else. Like we had the museum and Kiwanis and many other events that come in and have to ask for requests to close the streets. I feel like the same thing should be done by town council or the town of Christiansburg, especially when they're closing like streets, like on July the 4th and things like that. I would like to see the same, you know, if we're requesting for other people to do the same, we should be doing the same thing, so, that's just me.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, the Central Business Committee is gonna meet tomorrow at four o'clock. At that meeting, we'll discuss the facade grants, and we have received 11, 11 completed applications for those.
Nice. Okay. Any other committees that have met? No. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move into the discussion and action by mayor and council. One is, the first one is a conditional use permit request by Main Street Preservation LLC property owner and Joseph L. Simmons applicant to allow residential use, specifically the construction of 10 townhomes on property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Roanoke Street and Robert Street, approximately 1.008 acre tax parcel, 2528-35-1, in the B3 general business property. The property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held on July 8, and I think the planning commission voted five to one to recommend the, the permit.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, discussions?
Yeah, I would like to make several comments regarding this. I'm having a hard time with this regarding the whole thing because there is no site plan, there's no drawings regarding this piece of property. And I feel like, you know, we are obviously changing the zoning for this, but then, without having site plans, you don't know where the entrances are gonna be, where the exits are gonna be, what the trash cans are gonna look like, what, what is it gonna be dumpsters? How are they gonna have access to the land? How are they gonna exit? And I feel like there's just a lot of questions that haven't been asked because there is no drawings, there is nothing to go by. And the fact that, you know, is not really following the CUP too for the town. We did receive a public comment the other day, I was not here during that meeting, unfortunately, because of family issues that we had and my family withheld. But I would really like to read a part of this email. Anonymous citizen, Robert Street, this is for comments for the publication regarding the CUP request for 511 Roanoke Street. Hello, town council members and Mayor Barber. I'd like to submit my public hearing comments anonymously for personal safety reasons pertaining to a protective order. I hope that by doing so, my concerns are not seen as less valid than those comfortable to share their name and address. I do live on Robert Street and was very concerned with the comments and decisions of planning commission. It seems that for some reason, the CUP has not been held to the same standard as every other CUP, even though there were two residential comments of dissent against the vacantness of the proposal. When as if the residents will prefer residential businesses on that corner, I say a business will be a great, will be great. Another resident also boys identical opinions. One of those issues for businesses is that it is vacant, is a vacant lot and construction costs can be great with a high-priced land than requiring a high-priced construction project, including paving and possibly underground stormwater retention. Small businesses that fit the area and character perfectly have been priced out. We already have plenty of businesses on that corner, and having one more will be provide, will provide more economic opportunity to the right fit. Currently, the only businesses wealthy enough to invest in the land are franchise, established businesses, but this lot is a little smaller than a typical and not located near the interstate or competing for these franchise businesses. Just because the wealthiest businesses are in bidding doesn't mean that the parcel is unfit for business in general. And anyway, it went on on the economic growth of the town and everything else, and I, I do feel like it's important to me to see the drawings and stuff like that, so, because of that, I will actually be voting against that.
Okay, all right. So I, I think that, and Randy, my discussions earlier with you, you know, he is, he is requesting 10. The planning commission put no restrictions on that, but council can, if council felt more comfortable with eight or seven or whatever, council at this point can put that restriction on it, is that correct?
That's correct. And I'd just point out, there was one recommendation from the planning commission, it was that the site plan be brought back to the planning commission. I'll just point out that they made that condition in June, July 1st, there was a code of Virginia change that took effect, and basically, site plans can't go back to planning commission after the conditional use permit. So basically, and you couldn't bring it back to council either, basically, it'd have to meet code and staff review if it's approved. But you can place any conditions on it you see fit, including if you'd want to restrict the density to less than 10 units.
So I'm confused. Can we have a site plan for this, or we cannot request it because it went through there?
Well, you could, you could ask for a drawing, but he's not required to give you a drawing at this time, and like I say, if basically it's approved, you wouldn't have another chance to review a drawing. It would, it was simply basically.
But everything has to go through.
It would be administrative, it would be administrative review at that point.
Okay.
But why the planning commission asked for it and then passed it through and sent it to us?
I don't think they were aware of that code of Virginia change taking place. I, I think they pointed out that basically that was going to happen, and I think they understand that it would really just be for their information, it wouldn't be for additional comment.
But you can have, you can have different, you know, you can have different restrictions and things in place for, you know, for them to be able to do different things in the, in the planning of the buildings, right? I mean, we could peel the fences up if we wanted to, we could do all kinds of stuff.
You can place conditions on the request, yes, certainly. If you, if you want a condition for fence, townhouses are required to have a fence basically extending from the unit, but if you want any additional fencing or anything like that, that could be placed as a condition.
And what about stormwater and all kinds of stuff?
They, they would have to meet the state erosion and sediment control and stormwater regulations and basically our stormwater, which is essentially the state.
So it has to, they have to show all of that in the submitted plans for the, for the development itself, is that correct?
Correct.
But that doesn't mean that, just because we don't have a site plan right now, doesn't mean that we can vote, we have to vote for it, we can actually vote against it, right?
Correct.
All right, so, anyway, voted against it because there is, you know, not enough information about what's being built in there besides the information that there will be 10, 10 pieces of, you know, 10 townhomes, there is no other information regarding this.
That would be basically it.
All right, so I don't feel like there is enough information.
Besides the fact that they'd have to meet the code otherwise.
Yeah. Ms. Bowman, did you, we, did you want to say something?
No. Well, I do have a question. Somebody in town has, if we don't give a special variant.
It's Zone B3, so any residential use is subject to town council approval.
Okay. And is there a number per acre? That is the norm?
In the R3 district, we allow up to 10 units by right, and we allow up to 20 units with a conditional use permit. But basically, 10 units is allowed by right in the R3 district. Just to give you an idea of what the, the one unit per tenth of an acre is, Oak Tree is essentially one unit per tenth of an acre, 10 units per acre.
But with the difference that this is a B3, this is not R3 right now.
Correct. This is Zone B3 general business.
And right now, for B3, what can you build? You cannot build any.
By, by right, you have a lot of commercial uses, you know, hotel, restaurant, retail, offices, mini warehouses are all allowed by right. Certain conditional use permit uses, like a commercial garage or residential use is allowed with a conditional use permit. There, there's a lot of uses allowed.
It, it seems.
I'm sorry.
No, Kim, go ahead, I, you go.
I just want to make sure I heard right. So, and what they're asking for would be comparable to the density of Oak Tree.
Correct.
It would change the zoning, Kim. Right now, the zoning is not changed, right now it's commercial.
Correct, yes, I understand that, thank you.
You know, I, for some reason, in, in looking at this thing, in, in the past, when we're changing something from one category to another, do we not normally have a request to change it to residential, followed by a conditional use permit?
That's my question.
Is that what, I mean, Summit Ridge is the one that thinks to me, they, we had to, we had to rezone it.
That was a rezoning from agriculture to residential because the agriculture wouldn't have allowed the, the dense residential use. With a, with B3, I mean, they could have simply asked for a rezoning rather than a conditional use permit. If they had done that, then it would be allowed at one unit per tenth of an acre, if it were rezoned to R3, multifamily.
Do we know why they didn't request that and they instead, instead requested the conditional use permit?
Basically, the property owner is, wants to sell the property and wants to market it as residential, but he wants to retain the potential for commercial use in case it doesn't sell as residential.
Well, can he do both? If it's, if we change it to residential?
But we're not changing the, we're not changing it.
But we're not changing the, we're not changing it to R three. We're leaving it as a B three, giving him a conditional use that says that if he chooses to put apartments or, uh, townhomes on it is, is the only thing that's going on. So then it could be used in either capacity that it was sold for.
Townhouses are allowed as a, as a use in B three, but only with town council approval and only with conditions that council imposes to mitigate whatever problems you might see there.
Does the staff anticipate, I mean, from the staff's point of view, are there any problems that you would be concerned about if we were to approve this conditional use permit?
I, I think the, probably the biggest concern I think would be traffic in general. It, just to give you an idea, 10 units per, uh, basically V-DOT uses 10 trips per day per unit. Actually multifamily, they use a little less than that, but single family, it's 10 per, 10 per unit. So you're looking at about 100 trips per day. Roanoke Street is probably 12,000 or 15,000 vehicles per day. So it, it, traffic wise, Roanoke Street can accommodate the traffic. I think the biggest concern with, is the traffic getting in and out.
Yeah.
We would not allow the townhouses to have individual driveways. We'd make them have a common entrance exit. So, so they're only going to have one entrance exit point off of Roanoke Street would be the most we would allow.
I support this area being residential and I support the use of the area for the townhomes. But I share some of the same concerns, just approving a conditional use permit. A blanket approval means that they apply the code and as long as they're abiding by the code, then they're, they're fine to build. And I just, um, I mean, I guess if, so, well, let me ask you a question. If they were to request this to be rezoned to residential, R three, they would be in the same position. They could put in those townhomes and as long as they're meeting the code, we would not have a say. Administratively, they would be approved.
That's correct.
So whether they request R three or they request this conditional use permit, the same thing is allowed.
Correct, although they couldn't go back to a commercial use if they were to
Right. Just, I guess, I mean, as far as the townhomes go, the townhomes meet the, the towns code, period.
Yes.
But allowing this conditional use permit allows them to meet the towns code for a future use or to, like, as you said, keep it as a business use. So he has flexibility and options when he's trying to sell it. And that's, that's really it. So the only reason we shouldn't approve the conditional use permit is if we don't want residents there. We just want it for business use if we're not comfortable, because otherwise we would say no to a residential, right, and R three zoning. Is that right?
He said that you can also put conditions as far as how many units you want on the, on the property because we are allowing for, for it to be a special use.
Yeah, but if not, if it's R three?
No.
Not if it's R three?
No, you can.
If it's, so if it's R three by right, they can build 10 townhomes.
It would take a rezoning to go to R three.
Right.
And if he were to rezone to R three, then he could build up to 10 units by, per acre by right.
Yeah. So it's just whether or not we're comfortable with 10 townho, the possibility of 10 townhomes there. Because if he does request R three zoning, that's the same question we have to ask is, are we comfortable with 10 townhomes there? If not, then tonight we should make a, a condition that we are only comfortable with a certain number of townhomes. Otherwise, it seems acceptable, in my opinion.
But we can put conditions right now. And right now there is not, um, he's not even asking for the change to R three right now, right? And so, um, with him not changing any of that, I mean, it's still going to be general business district and allowing him to build townhomes. And without any conditions, it's going to make it very hard for this town council, later on town council members, or even our staff to, to change anything, what he can build in there or not build. Because right now we don't even know which entrances are going to be able to be used. I mean, you got a street right there on the right side that, you know, right now I don't feel like there is enough information for us to go by. And I, you know, like we had pieces of land that we allow for him to be built and changed from agriculture to residential. A perfect example is the one by My Pike, um, the one by the middle school. When that came to town council, they came to, to change the zoning, but not only that, they came with site plans. And we made a lot of changes into that. We, we changed the number. We, we asked for conditions as far as where the trashcans was going to be. Was it going to be trashcans? Was it going to be a dumpster? What was it going to look like? What entrances were they going to use? I mean, there were a lot of questions and there were a lot of things that they went through. Right now, if we allow this to go through the way it is, there will not be an ability for anybody to ask any more questions.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. I will ask, are there any conditions that council would be comfortable putting on that property?
Call for vote. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay. So there's apparently there's, we're not going to, we'll allow it at the 10, up to the 10. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Bowman?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. So that is two, four and four against, so, uh, conditional use permit is not approved. Second, request for street closure on, for Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, between 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The request closure include East Main Street from North Franklin Street to, to Montague Street, Roanoke Street from East Main Street to First Street Southeast, Pepper Street Northeast from Hill Street to First Street Southeast, and Marvin Jarrell Circle from the, for the Heritage Day, um, festival to be held from 10 to two.
10 to three.
10 to three. Thank you very much. It's from the museum. This is from the Montgomery County Museum.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Discussions?
I, even though, and because I'm going to participate as far as my business go, and, but it will affect more than two or three businesses, I will actually abstain from this, but I'm in favor of it. I guess I will say, do I have to read that thing or sign?
I think you do. I think you do, okay.
What?
You're good.
I, I think you covered it.
Okay.
It's recorded.
All right. Thanks.
Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, is anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
I'm saying.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five oh and one abstention. Motion carries, ladies. Have a nice festival. The appointment of Damon Brewer and Renee Allred to the Public Arts Advisory Board for a two-year term, beginning July 22nd, 2025 to July 21st, 2027. Central Business Committee has recommended approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Are they here?
They're both here.
Are they both here? Where are we?
Where?
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five oh. Thank you very much. A recommendation regarding recording of the New River Valley Regional Water Authority Board of Directors meetings.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of second. Discussion?
Excited about this.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and you want that letter, you
So I, I, yeah, so I am totally in favor of this in that I think that we should have the mayor send them a letter stating that by motion of this council, that we formally request that they record and make public their meetings.
I have a question for you. What happens if, um, they said they don't have the equipment or whatever it is? Can we do?
So here's the thing, they, they do, they do Zoom calls, right? If you do a Zoom call, you can record a meeting. Plain and simple. It's not a, this, they're a professional organization. If they, if they're willing to, to agree to record, that's not a legitimate excuse.
Okay.
And all we can do is request and do a formal request and I, and I, I fully support the, having the mayor send them a letter stating that this council has requested that.
Can they, they can possibly ask us to do that ourselves, I'm sure, probably too.
Whatever.
And then I guess we'll talk about
At this point, at this point, we just send them a letter stating that our citizens have asked us to take this stand and so we agree.
I forgot, who is part of that authority right now? Can you guys?
Scott.
Scott.
Scott. The, can you tell me something really quick? Did they ever find out those barrels that were lost from the arsenal?
That has nothing to do with the water authorities.
I think there's only, my, the last thing I heard, there is one barrel missing and that's the last, uh, I saw it somewhere on the news site, so.
And it was the arsenal.
The artery downstream of the end that coincided
Well, but I know that there were a lot of comments that were regarding back and forth with the water authorities. So I figure you guys will know something about it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six oh. Thank you very much. Uh, move on. Staff reports, town manager?
I'll just mention that the emergency services foster care supply drive went well and, uh, we're already using some of the items that they
You go ahead and jump in closer to that microphone to pull it down in front of your something house.
The, the emergency services foster care supply drive went well and, uh, we're already using some of the items that, uh, were donated. I'll mention August 5th is National Night Out and, uh, I think Christina will probably reach out to you in regards to that. And August 9th will be our next Rockin' Main from five to nine downtown.
Is that on west or east?
West.
West.
That's all I've got.
And town attorney?
No report, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff? Any council reports?
No report. No report.
Okay, no reports. All right.
So that, can I ask a question? That foster thing drive, was that not part of the chamber also? Was there not a chamber leadership class or something project and Miles headed that?
Yeah. So, um, one of our employees, Miles Campbell, is part of Leadership NRV, which is a continued education program that, uh, some people participate in. This year they did something different with Leadership NRV, um, and that's a program under the chamber. They put out a request to all of the students in the cohort and asked if any of them were interested in, um, starting a nonprofit, what would it be? So all of the class members pitched their idea of a nonprofit and then the entire class voted on which one seemed the most viable and had the opportunity for the most impact. And the class selected Miles's, uh, potential nonprofit. And so out of that came a foster care closet, which works directly with the Department of Social Services. And then our tie-in here at the town is that emergency services often works with, uh, DSS on situations involving children, unfortunately. So it is a cause that's close to our emergency services officers. So we collected donations to support the Department of Social Services, to support the children in foster care in Christiansburg. Um, and then also subsequently it supported one of our own employees who is doing great work in Christiansburg, so.
We had, we had involvement with law enforcement, EMS.
And the fire department. Yeah. Because they all, at certain times, will, um, be in situations that help children in Christiansburg.
Kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Other business, Mr. Wilson?
Yep. Make a motion for a closed meeting under code of Virginia, 2.2 dash 3711 A7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. The closed meeting is being held for potential litigation regarding a retaining wall at 1460 South Franklin Street.
Second.
Motion on the second. Discussions prior to? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six. Uh, we're going to take about a three, four minute break in order to, uh, allow the, the council chambers to clear. Ladies, if you'll turn off your microphones.